So without further ado, it is my pleasure to welcome our speaker today, Jan Callison. Jan served 12 years as a member of the Hennepin County Board of Commissioners representing the sixth district, all or part of the 16 western suburban communities. During her tenure, she was elected by her colleagues at various times as Chair of the County Board, Chair of the Regional Rail Authority, and Chair of the Housing and Redevelopment Authority. Prior to her election as County Commissioner, she served 12 years as an at-large council member in Minnetonka and three years as Mayor of Minnetonka. Jan received her undergraduate degree from Morningside College, graduate degree from Johns Hopkins University, and law degree from Harvard University. She's worked as an in-house legal counsel and as an adjunct professor at William Mitchell College of Law and as the executive director of an affordable housing nonprofit agency. Jan and her husband live in Minnetonka where they raise three children. Welcome, Jan. Glad to have you here.
Thank you, Michelle. It's a pleasure to be here. It's great to see these faces and people I haven't seen for a while and others who have elected experience as well. So I'm hopeful you'll find this interesting and feel free to comment as we go along. I've got a presentation, so I'm going to do my screen, I hope. Oftentimes, people ask me, well, I shouldn't say oftentimes, I've been retired for three months, but people want to know how it is to be retired. And I often say, well, one difference is nobody cares what I think anymore, which puts a heavy burden on my husband, of course. And so both he and I thank you for this opportunity to share a few thoughts. I thought it might be interesting, let's see if I can get it to move, to cover four topics. The first is the uniqueness of Hennepin County, and I can never speak about having been a county commissioner without talking about Hennepin County because I think it's such a special county. And because I think we oftentimes don't think in terms of the county, we think about our cities. And so I'm going to spend a little bit of time about Hennepin County. I find people are often confused about what counties do and the relationship with other levels of government, so I'm going to touch on that. A little bit on holding local elected office today and then the impact of the pandemic. And you should feel free to interrupt me as I go along and either ask questions or make comments. I'm perfectly happy with that. If you've got your hand raised and I don't see it, just stop me. So let's talk first about Hennepin County. 1.2 million people. I mean, just think of that for a minute. That's one-fifth of the population of the state of Minnesota. So if we only had in Minnesota counties of the same population size as Hennepin, we would have five. We have 87. That just gives you a sense of the disproportion for Hennepin County in relationship to the rest of the counties of the state. It is an incredibly diverse county, so it has 45 cities. We think in terms of Minneapolis. Minneapolis is less than half of the population of Hennepin County. And it's both urban and suburban and rural. The smallest city in Hennepin County is Medicine Lake with 400 people. The last time I heard in the district I represented is Woodland, people voted in somebody's house. So we have this wide diversity of communities in Hennepin County. Thirty percent of the county, people of color, and that's not Minneapolis. That is increasingly the first ring suburbs and people moving out beyond that. So that diversity is not as concentrated as people might think in one city. Seven commissioner districts. Most counties in Minnesota have five. There are a couple of metro counties who have seven. But if you think in terms of that 1.2 million people, each district contains about 165,000 people. That is a larger district than any state legislator represents in the state of Minnesota. And the budget exceeds $2 billion. That is a greater budget than some states have. Hi, Steve. Good to see you as well. So let's talk, whoops, that went one too far. Let's talk about the role of counties. And there are two phrases that I hope you'll associate with counties. One is creature of the state, and the second is state-supervised and county-administered. So let's talk first about creature of the state. When I think of cities, I think of them as sort of being organic, sort of bottoms up. So people created cities in Minnesota and the legislature has created certain classes of cities and cities have certain responsibilities, but they really, people came together and created this unit, if you will. Counties are much more top-down, where the legislature has said 87 counties. Now, certainly, Hennepin was created, but those lines were drawn in some cases by the legislature, I believe. And the legislature has a much bigger role in saying what counties can do. So there is a whole statute book devoted to Hennepin County. And in theory, anything that Hennepin does should be tied back to some piece of legislation that authorizes it to do something. That is different from cities. So counties are a creature of the state in Minnesota. We also have state-supervised, county-administered social services. And Minnesota is one of about a dozen states that delivers social services in this way. If you were thinking in terms of sports, the analogy would be the state sets the rules. And when I speak with groups, I would often ask them why it is that they think that we have the system of county-administered social services. And oftentimes, somebody would say, well, we think government is best when it's closest to the people. You can allow for local differences. It perhaps permits county to be more, or is government to be more efficient. And I like to call that the good government answer, and I think that's very true. I think there's also a bad government answer, what I call a bad government answer, and that's that it is so much cheaper for the state of Minnesota to have counties deliver these services. So if you think about the services and who's paying for what? The county is paying for the building. If you go to Bridgedale, or if you go downtown to Government Center, the county is paying for that building, the county is paying for the employee, the county is paying for the computer that they're using, the county is paying for the insurance. I mean, all those costs are the county's costs. If you added those to the state budget, the state budget would be much greater than it is. Now, the state does provide some assistance called county program aid, which is intended to recognize some of those costs. I have never seen a comparison of what it actually costs to administer these programs and what the state provides, but I'm guessing it's a fraction. So it certainly provides a way of delivering services that's local, but it also provides the state with a safety valve. And whenever the state has a financial problem, they certainly can raise taxes, but they also can shift the burden onto the counties to do additional work. And they can save the state budget by increasing the burden on the county, as I like to say. And then they get to say, those counties, they spend so much money, they spend all your property tax and they keep raising your taxes. What is wrong with those counties and the people who administer them? So that gives you a little bit of a sense of the relationship with the state in Minnesota, both the state and the legislature. So the state is supervising counties as they are delivering these services. There are standards that counties have to meet. Those standards, those expectations are measured. Counties can be docked if they don't measure, they don't meet those standards. The county computer system has to be able to speak to the state computer system. And remember, there are 87 counties in Minnesota. There could be potentially 87 different systems that the state system is trying to talk to. And to the extent that the state system has not been upgraded, and that is true, there are some state systems where they still have little green things moving across the screen. It's much harder for the counties to be efficient and speak with the state. So the counties are dependent upon the state in a variety of ways to deliver those services and for the county to be more efficient as well. People, I think, oftentimes are also confused about the relationship with cities and counties. So people like to think in terms of a hierarchy. City, county, state, federal government. And so if the city is perhaps not doing something, they think, well, why don't I go to the county, which probably has a supervisory role over the city, and see if I can't get the city to do something by talking to the county? And in actuality, the city and the county are to a certain extent operating in different spheres. So there's certainly some overlap, and elections is one place where there's an overlap, where the city is responding to the county, assessing is a place where there's an overlap. But much more commonly, the city has a certain area of responsibility and the county has a certain area of responsibility. And so in the metro, the cities have planning and zoning authority. And that's not true outstate, but it is in the metro. So it's the city that's responsible for making the decision about whether the church can be next to the bingo parlor or whether the spilling can be three stories, or it could be 10 stories. Or in Minneapolis, if you're not going to have single-family residential zoning anymore. That is a city function. The county is much more concerned with the quality of somebody's life within those buildings. Are they fed? Are they clothed? Are the kids going to school? Do they have mental health services? Is their job training that's sufficient? How about chemical dependency services? That is quintessentially the county role. And of course, all of this is sort of true in theory, but in practice can be different. So a lot of cities provide social services. Minneapolis is clearly one of those. Think then of the challenge that you've got, though, if you're in Minneapolis, if you're talking about reforming police services and you want to include social services. But the county is really the entity that's primarily responsible for social services once you move away from the state. There's this complicated relationship between cities and counties in the social service area potentially that makes reform challenging. Other counties. There is, there's a state organization called the Association of Minnesota Counties. And Hennepin belongs to that association, so there is a relationship between them. When I would meet with commissioners from rural counties, they had two questions for me oftentimes. How much did it cost me to run an election? And how many constituents do I have? And it is very hard for a rural Minnesota county to understand the challenges in Hennepin. And in fact, even within the metro, I think if you are Hennepin County, you feel like there's a target on your back because you are so large and your experience is so different that it's really hard for other counties, including the metro counties oftentimes, to understand what is going on and what your perspective may be. But there are associations. There's clearly the Metropolitan mosquito control district, which is set by statute, where counties are working together in sort of a joint enterprise. There are transactional relationships, so the Hennepin County Medical Examiner provides services to Scott and Dakota County by contract. So there are relationships between them, but Hennepin is different, as I said, from all the other counties. And that is reflected in the relationship. And then the Met Council, and Molly may want to chime in as well. So when I was at the city council in Minnetonka, I dealt more with the Met Council initially than at the county because it was about housing and the Affordable Communities Act. That is different now because of transportation, but it is this very indefensible system in light rail where the Met Council builds the line and the county pays for it. And when would you ever ask or expect efficiency and transparency to take place when you have one entity responsible for the work and another entity responsible for paying for it? It is a very challenging relationship. But if you think of the Met Council, I think in terms of systems, so the transportation system, water treatment system, sewer system, aviation system, that's one of the Met Council functions. And then some reflections on being a local elected official today. So this really goes back a quarter of a century to when I was elected to the city council in Minnetonka. And there are some things that I think have changed. One of those is a style of communication. So it is very rare, in my experience, for somebody actually to pick up the telephone and call, or it would be rare for them to call me as an elected official. People who called tended to simply want to register their votes or register their positions. And so they would call at night, they'd call in the weekend, they'd leave a message, it was all prepared. But there's not that sort of back-and-forth dialogue that you might hope. And email is the preferred means of communication, and I find that a very problematic way of communicating. You know, when you get an email, you can't see the person's face, you can't hear the tone of voice. You simply get this written statement that's one-way. You respond, you probably don't get anything back from them. I mean, it's just a very abrupt way of communicating, and it doesn't promote dialogue at all. So in the time I've been in office, people have moved from telephones to email. And I think there's some loss there in terms of the ability to really have a dialogue and a back-and-forth. Another thing that I think has changed is nationalization of local issues. I think it was Tip O'Neill, he used to say that all politics are local. I think you now could say that all politics are national. Where increasingly, you see national groups that have agendas that they are applying locally. So they've got an issue. They have maybe a foundation that's supporting them, they've got lots of money, they get some organizers. People sign on to the issue, they begin to agitate around it. Maybe it's because if they can get enough local units of government to do it, they could influence federal policy. Maybe it's because they're unhappy with federal policy and they want to opt out of it and have a different system locally. But you see increasingly that local issues are nationalized. And I think that makes it really hard for local politicians or local public servants, if you will. But political polarization has changed. Local races are nonpartisan. That means on the ballot, there's no party identification that goes along with them. You clearly can run on a partisan basis. And I think increasingly, you see that people are doing that for local elections, that that sort of hands-off, you know, this isn't partisan, not going to get a political party endorsement, has become less common. Again, I would ask people why it is that they think that legislatively, local races are not partisan. And the answer that I think is the case is that local government is supposed to be much more about service delivery. So it's not about policy where it matters so much if you are Republican or Democrat or something else. It's about plowing the roads, it's about getting the elections done, it's about doing the recycling, it's about things that you hope are less partisan. And so I think we begin to lose some of that, some of the strength of local elections when everything becomes as partisan as we're moving towards. I think there is less dialogue that takes place at the dais, if you will, and less opportunity to change minds. So I think increasingly, with Facebook and other platforms, when there's an issue that comes up, people take their position, they put it on Facebook, and they come into the meeting and they've got their position, and it's already set. And the opportunity to change minds is simply not as great as it used to be. And then finally, I think there's less value placed upon consensus, that if you can get to four, that's good enough, you can vote the issue in and it'll be effective. Whereas I've always thought if you get to five or six, you've made your tent broader, you've brought more people in, you've probably created a bigger base. But I just, I don't think that's as common today as it was when I first was elected to office. So what have I learned? First thing is to read the minutes. And for me, that's shorthand that really says, do the work. And you'll be surprised how smart people will think you are if you simply have done the work. If you have read the minutes, if you've done the background that's necessary, if you've really taken the time to understand the issue. And you simply can't fake that, I don't think. So read the minutes, and I will tell you too, if you find a correction in the minutes, they'll really think you're smart. So that's my little tip for the day. My experience is that anger is rarely effective. I mean, you get an email and it's somebody who's angry and you've been inundated by emails and you want to respond in kind, and maybe it's a style question, maybe it's a male-female question. I don't think anger really does anything more than create anger on the other side, and it just creates a wall. So I think if you feel like you can't respond right away because you're angry or you can't respond without being angry, you need just to back off and take some time because anger will simply not be effective. The third thing I would say is to communicate. And I believe that people will forgive you for having a different position more rapidly than they will forgive you for ignoring them. So if you get an email and you disagree, or constituent contact, and you disagree, and you explain to them why you disagree, I think oftentimes, people understand, they'll accept that. But if you get an email with which you disagree and you just say, I'm not going to respond, I think people have a much harder time with that and they are much less apt to forgive you for that. Next thing is don't assume motives. Don't assume because the person disagrees with you that they are a bad person, that they are corrupt, that they are unethical, that they aren't very intelligent. It's easy to do that and it's easy in this climate, but people simply disagree and it reflects their experiences. And so don't assume motives. And then I think the final thing of what I've learned is, is the challenge for local government, I think it is to learn how to challenge but also support administration. And that is particularly true at Hennepin County. So again, 1.2 million people, more than a $2 billion budget, seven commissioners. If you've ever been to government centers on the 24th floor of the county government center, I used to say it's very hard to see down to the bottom on the 24th floor. It is very hard to know what's going on. Administration really does know, and so you have to respect their role as being the experts. But at the same time, the policymakers have an important function as really providing that policy, providing that direction. And so you have to be challenging of them, but be challenging of them in a way that is also supportive of them so that they work with you. And it's not enough just to come in and criticize them. I think you have to understand too, the important role they play of providing that expertise and that knowledge of what's going on. So some things that haven't changed. Same underlying issue. How do we use scarce resources to maximize benefits? The need for strong personal relationships among the policymakers and an expert and dedicated staff. And I can't overemphasize that enough. And actually, let me go back one minute. Nope, I did say everything I wanted to say there. So let me talk just a minute about the impact of the pandemic as well. Financial picture is still being written. I don't think that's going to be the story of the pandemic. Certainly now with the relief package that's coming through Washington, it won't solve all the problems. But we have really a sophisticated property tax system in Minnesota. And I think we'll see that financially, at least the underpinnings will be strong, whether the county will spend enough money to deal with some of the issues, and that's disparities, is an open question. But that financial picture would not worry me as much as really the disparities that we're going to see. And I think this is going to be devastating, is too strong a word, but I don't think you can worry enough about the impact of kids being out of school for a whole year, about the job loss that's gone on, about the need for increased mental health services. I mean, all those things that you read about are exactly, exactly the case. And so it saddens me to think about what I think we really had made as progress in Hennepin County, even though the percent of people living in poverty had increased. I think we had a good direction and it's just going to be that much harder because of the much greater need that now exists. And then finally, the area I worry about with the pandemic is governance. And this may be too wonky, for example, but you know, just like at the state level, we have to decide whether we think, not decide, but there are conversations about what's the role of the governor and what's the role of the legislature. I mean, our system is really based upon this sort of push and pull, this tension between different levels of government or different branches of government. And there is a legitimate question about what point does Governor Walz have to give back some of that power to the legislature, even if he doesn't really trust the legislature because that's a system that we have. The same thing exists between the administrative and the policy functions for local government. So the administration, the administrator, the county administrator, they certainly had an important role and still have an important role to play. And so when the pandemic first started a year ago and I was still on the county board, we gave the county administrator a lot of control and a lot of authority because that was the right thing to do, because things were so moving, moving so fast, because you didn't have time to bring in necessarily seven people and go through the whole process. But at some point, that has to be drawn back because the policy function is important, because the board is the elected representative, especially in local government, of that whole populace. And so there was a point where it seemed to me it was important for the board to reassert itself in terms of beginning to kind of push back on the county administrator, not because he was doing a bad job, but simply because our system of government requires that tension. So I think that's been an open issue and will continue to be an issue, and you'll see it, as I say, at the state. At some point, the pandemic is over. I don't know what that point is, and I don't know who's going to recognize it. But at some point, we have to go back to the way things used to be. There'll be a similar discussion, I think, at Hennepin County. And then the other governance issue that I think exists is it exacerbates the tendency to bypass the public. And counties are not as good as cities at public input. If you think about the county again, counties think in terms of clients because they're delivering those social services. So certainly, we have constituents, but it's an administrative function to a larger extent. It's a lot of accepting contracts and approving grants, and it's a lot of dealing with clients. And so the whole public is, it's a little bit harder to get the public involved at the county level. And it's much easier, frankly, as a local elected official or any sort of elected official, not to have to deal with the public. I mean, not to have to slow down, not to have to spend the time to do a hearing. And so at Hennepin County, there's an agenda piece called immediate approval, where ideally, if you had a contract, you know, something not controversial, you don't really have time to go through the two-step process of decision-making at the county. It won't hurt anything if you don't do it. Let's just do it on immediate approval. But it became very easy to push a whole lot of substance into immediate approval because you had to move fast. So you've got a hotel that you want to buy in order to house people who are homeless, and you don't have a lot of time and it's, you know, it's private, and if you share too much information, you might lose the deal. But is that really the right answer, not to have it be more public than it is? Another issue that I think that had to be, has to be thought about as we sort of do the postmortem once the pandemic ends. So that, I think, concludes what I prepared. As I say, I'm happy to have a discussion with you, happy to answer your questions. I think I will stop the screen sharing so I can see more faces. And thank you again for the chance to share a little bit of what I have learned and thought about in the last 12 years and certainly the last three months.
Well, thank you, Jen. I thought that was really expertly done. I appreciate your clarity and your precision and your expertise. That was a very good presentation.
Thank you.
In my humble opinion.
Are there questions I can answer? Are there comments? I mean, certainly, Betsy, Molly, Peggy, Steve, you certainly have experienced as elected officials you may want to share, and all of you have had experience of observing what's going on. So happy to, as I say, take questions or to get into a dialogue with folks as well.
I'll just say, I totally agree with your comments about elected officials and your kind of experience and how it's changed. I was first elected in 1990 and in the ensuing 12 years, I really saw a big difference. And some of it was just brought about because of little changes or what seemed to be little changes on how we could associate with each other. You know, when we got rid of, with the kind of not-a-drop legislation that you couldn't go out with a lobbyist and have lobbyists pay for anything beyond a cup of coffee, and maybe not that. Problem was that those were the kinds of meetings where legislators would get together and there were lobbyists there. But that's where you learned what other people thought about bills that were being brought forward or contemplated. And you knew who you could go to for support of legislation that you were considering. And, boy, I think things just really started going downhill after that because the opportunities to meet people from the other branch, the other chamber, were not there so much. And it just made it harder, much harder.
And I didn't mention the communication. When people now use email, think back to your email. Do you have your address on your email? Do you have just your phone number and your email address? Because so many times, the communication would come in, no address, no ability to know if it was my constituent or somebody else's constituent, if they even looked at Hennepin County. And the relationship between the constituent, I think, is really important. And I mean, I would be protective about my constituents communicating with another commissioner as well. But it's so much harder today. You have to go back and say, you know, would you be willing to share your address? And sometimes they are and sometimes they aren't. And it's just become harder. And then because you can now go to websites and you put in your name and it sends an email to all seven county commissioners and it's automatically generated. And, you know, all those emails that come out just make it really hard to do the response. But I also think in terms of the current county board with pandemic and remote meetings. I mean, it is not the same to meet on Zoom as opposed to be in the same room or on the same floor day-to-day when you can run into each other and have the conversation. And I think that's a huge challenge and it will be important to get these groups back into the same room so they can accomplish some of what you're talking about, Peggy, on at least a fundamental level of creating those relationships that really are so important to good governance.
Yeah, and I absolutely feel that even in this setting with this Rotary Club, our ability to do a quick chat before we sit down and have lunch together and that relationship building that we're, yeah, we're chatting and we're celebrating each other's successes and things, but it's not the same.
Right.
It's not the same.
I've got four, sorry.
No, go ahead.
I've got four new board members that I've never met face-to-face. And it's like, wow, it's going to be interesting when we get together again and meet at the coffee room or the drinking fountain and have a conversation about life, maybe even an adult beverage. or the or the drinking fountain and have a conversation about life, maybe even an adult beverage.
When drinking fountains open again.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, think about that, I haven't been out. But I have a question, if I might. Just from the perspective of, I've not had a conversation with a government official officially, but I was curious about, you know, the all the issues with the driver's license. I call it SNAP, who basically where the the investment was short sighted, I think. And I know from my life in business, we always tried to find something that was efficient and that made sense and we knew what the timeline was going to be, or at least we thought we would. But it was always done with the investment in our 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 client and with efficiency and the best updated data possible. I don't know, that was a state issue, but I don't, I'm just curious in terms of Hennepin County versus state. How do and state, how do decisions get made at the government level when they're investing money? Because they're trying to serve a population and they want to do as best they can. In Minnesota's example, they went, oh my God, we spent all this money, we can't possibly not continue it, when in fact they finally did deep six it.
Well, it is, it is a state, it was a state issue, but you would hope on all these conversations because the county, again, is administering much of the program. So you can certainly go to a state office and get your your tabs or get your license renewed, but you're also going to the county. And and part of the challenge for the state is really to listen to those county officials who say, well, this is what, this is how it works, this is how the system works. And so as you design this system, are you taking into account X, Y, and Z that we experience as we administer it? And that's even more true in the social service area where some of the state systems are terrifically outdated. And so again, the state has to find the right people to listen to, but you've got 87 counties and they've got different experiences. So you have to get the right people in the room and then you have to give them the right direction and the right oversight. So huge miss by the state. It meant, of course, and so many of these, in so many of these areas, people are coming into county offices and and it's the county employee who's having to try and explain what's not working and how it should be working and then give that message to the state. And in that case, you know, the state eventually deep six the system and went on to something else. But it's it's not the only only instance. And I think it's really a question of, well, I shouldn't say it's a question, I think more expertise from those who use the system will be helpful.
Does Hennepin County have ombudsmen's that persons can go to to get into the system?
Well, it certainly has in the social service area, it has some people with particular expertise, for example. And and it's the social service area that's the most complex. And again, with that relationship is hard for people to follow. So, you know, as I said, you've got a a system where the state's making the rules, the county's administering it. There are instances where the state sends out notices in the name of the county. The county may find out after the notice has gone out that the state has sent the notice out. You know, people are trying to figure out, do you call the state person, do you call the the county person? And there certainly are folks within Hennepin County, at least, who have the expertise to really work through that social service system and it is a complicated system. I mean, it is remarkable how challenging it can be to work through it.
Thank you.
Yeah, Jen, I had to do a screenshot of the slide that you had being a local elected official today. And and each, just as the pandemic came, I felt as if at all levels of society, we were trying to figure out how to be better listeners. But with the advent of social media and email and the points you had out, style of communication, nationalization of local issues, political polarization and less dialogue and opportunity to change minds, that 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 just really sums it up because email is not a form of communication that that can be very well sophisticated when you're trying to say, I hear you say, you know, good, good communication, normally active listening, as you summarize in which you heard the person saying so that when you respond, you know, the person is responding to this part of what you're saying. And that allows, you know, the other person to say, well, no, I didn't mean that, Brian, I was really focusing on this. You can't do that with email.
No, I will say that even when I used to get those phone calls when I was a city official more, it was rare to have a person who was willing to listen to me, you know, with whom I could say, well, I hear you, but here's what I'm thinking about. What do you think about this? And the person would respond and I'd say, well, yeah, I mean, really that dialogue was was relatively rare, but you had the possibility of it happening when it was a phone conversation or face to face. And email, it's it's just not, it's just not very easy, especially when it's somebody who's upset about something. You know, and oftentimes they do include a phone number, so you certainly could pick up the phone and call them up and try and handle it, handle it that way. But depending on how many emails you get, it's it's more or less possible. But I do not think email is a friend of communication. I don't think it's advanced our communication styles at all.
Yeah, but the unfortunate conclusion that
Twitter, Twitter would be even worse.
I'm not going to go to tweeting and twittering because that's
They're mine.
Because then people don't have to read email if they just tweet, if they just tweet and text. But your last point on that slide was less value placed upon consensus. And and so many people are moving to a zero sum game, you know. You'll see, especially on social media, let me see who's going to share this post, which is, you know, you love your mother, you know, it's like, your point is, you know. So, yeah, that that idea that we're in a zero sum game has really been dominating politics and even social life too much.
You know, and it's something, it's something we see federally and at the state level and it begins to move down to local level. I mean, all these issues eventually make it down to the local, local level. And and that is one that I I do think is particularly challenging. And, you know, you can get rid of consensus either by acting on four votes or making sure you elect people all have the same idea so that you don't have that diversity of viewpoint, which really will make the decision that's that's promulgated by the decision makers, I think, accepted more readily by a broader group of people.
Seems to be an increasing discomfort with difference and and what I find and and whether you're individual or in a group and from consensus to everyone, because what you want is everybody, like, it almost feels like a Minnesota nice thing for me. Wouldn't it be great if we all agreed? But really, we don't want everybody to agree all the time, but that's really not ideals. And then how that plays out and, you know, some of our personal relationships, nobody likes to be uncomfortable.
Right.
However.
To what Dean was saying, he's got a board with, did you say four new members, Dean?
Four new members.
Yeah, because when you, when you can all agree to try to come to a consensus and you've got that five-four vote on a nine-person board, does the board meeting end when you adjourn or does it pick up in the parking lot? You know, you know what best
If you're an elected official, it ends at the meeting because you're not supposed to have a parking lot conversation.
Well, until you read the paper the next day.
And that's another difference for local officials is that open meeting law, which does not, the legislature did not apply to itself. You know, it's only, it's only local elected officials who are limited in terms of how many, how many can be together and have a conversation. And so that changes the dialogue a little bit too.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well, I was going to say, speaking of emails, I got in one of the email newsletters I read this morning, Minnesota, by US News, I think, is ranked number two state in its variety of things that they've rated. And I started digging through the numbers and we're not number one in anything, we're just very good across. And as, you know, 20% of the people in Minnesota and Hennepin County, you know, we got to take some credit for that and thank you because, you know, your service is part of why we are the way we are.
Thank you. Thank you. Betsy, did you want to say something?
Yeah, and it's gone, it's okay. Oh, one, one thing I did want to ask, Jen, you know, so you've had three months of of away time and and have had the ability to then, you know, gather these reflections and put put together this presentation. Have you had a chance to go back now to the current serving members and share some of this wisdom? And kind of pull them aside and say, here, here's what I, here's what I learned.
You know, I, I mean, there's probably things that I would have expressed in the course of being a county commissioner. So the format is is different. Whether they want to hear from me is is, I think, an open question. They get advice from all sorts of of people, all different perspectives. And I respect the fact that this is a difficult time and they'll have to learn what's important to them. And there will be, it's a fairly new board, as you probably know. There will be some mistakes that I might think were made. There were mistakes that I made when I was in in office. And I think probably support is as important as anything, particularly now with with the George Floyd trial, the Derek Chauvin trial and and the challenges that that are before them. And that will will continue. I mean, the this past year with both the pandemic and then the civil unrest is as challenging a time as I think we've seen in Hennepin County. And I hope that the legislature will find it and is hard to be supportive of Minneapolis, even though that's not its instinct. I hope, I'm hopeful that it'll find a way to recognize that there are people who need support and need help in Minneapolis and punishing the Minneapolis City Council will not, will not accomplish any positive goal.
You know, Jen, I think you did such a great job in addressing the the challenges of the partnerships and the complexity of the issues. We have to work in partnership with one another to get the things done that need to be done in this world and it's it's very challenging. I think, you know, we also have different constraints within our specific organizations that that make that challenging to come together in consensus or we may have the same great goals, be it adequate housing, addressing the homeless issue, things like that. But we have constraints within our organization as to what we can actually do. So making those partnership connections is so critical and the dialogue is so critical. And bringing more people to the table, on the one hand, it's it it adds to the complexity of us all working together, but it's absolutely essential in what we may not be able to do, perhaps another entity can. But if we're not talking and we're not around the table together having these conversations, it doesn't do much to advance our overall goal, which oftentimes are so similar, I think, among the organizations. So thank you for expressing what you did. This was, this has been a great conversation, I've really enjoyed listening.
Thank you, Molly, it's good to hear from you. And thank you for your work at the Met Council. I mean, maybe hard, you may feel like a target in your back in Hennepin County, think what it's like to be at the Met Council and go to the legislature, yikes.
Thank you so much, Jan, this has been really educational and I know that it inspires me to continue to learn because never is it done, every day I get older, I realize that, how many more things I don't know. So thank you for and as we close today, we are going to recite the four-way test of the things as Rotarians that we think, say, or do. First, is it the truth? Second, is it fair to all concerned? Third, will it build goodwill and better friendships? Fourth, will it be beneficial to all concerned? That concludes today's Golden Valley Rotary Virtual Meeting. Wonderful to see you all, enjoy the warm weather.
Thank you, Dan.
Absolutely terrific.